Looks like it's right at five on my laptop. Everybody ready? Okay, so I'll go ahead and call it a order. This working session of the Nelson County School Board of Education on September 6th, 2018 at 5:00 PM. We've got the copies of the agenda here with us. Are there any changes we need to make to it?
The only change is Wes Bradley will be talking about the Head Start utilization. I'll be talking about that. Tiffany.
Okay. So bringing the B team on that presentation, right?
In the spirit of good flag.
So we'll go on into item three then dedicated to our community. The first item, item A is the tax discussion. Ms. Owens.
Well, you received a packet of information, I believe that was yesterday, and had a chance to go through with Wes and I on a lot of the information we had gathered about historical data and what we're looking at over the coming year as far as revenue and expenses that went into the decision making on what we were going to recommend to the board about this tax discussion. There was group... See, this is why you don't give me these things.
She pressed a different button.
So there were several graphs taking you through several different areas of what affects our tax assessment and what affects our tax revenue. And that's all been provided. I don't want to reiterate, I don't want to repeat what we've already told you, but if you had specific questions.
I think if you look at slide eight, which will be back on page seven, yeah, this is a nice shot, I think, of essentially summarizing some of those forces at play. As we've talked about the shifting funding landscape from state to local taxes and the tenure impact really on increased local property assessments. And without going into great depth and managing the equation that allows us to see that as our property taxes have, property assessments have increased, that's also decreased our state SEAC by 2.1 million over that time period. Additionally, 1% annual decrease in enrollment adds up to 1.6 million and new retirement costs equal $1 million. Other state cuts from another, from a number of grants over the past 10 years lead to really a total 10-year decrease in SEAC funding of estimated $5.2 million. So I think that with looking at House Bill 362 and Senate Bill 151, recognizing the impact of CERS contributions and KTRS contributions with the potential for more KTRS contributions if Senate Bill 151, which is currently in litigation, anticipated to be settled around December, if that goes into play, will add on annually to the tune of about $25,000 a year for 25 to 30 years.
In addition to the CERS increase.
So with that said, we really have a unique, you know, inverse relationship here going where we have our local, our local property values have increased, which decreases our, the state's capacity from their equity, their equity fund to support us. And that coupled with other forces at play has continued to reduce the amount of funding provided to the state.
I think there's often sometimes confusion about tax rates and that they affect our SEAC funding and they don't. What affects it is the assessment. The assessment, the state looks at, and they give you a base amount based on your number of students, and then they subtract out what they feel like your local effort should be. And it's the same across the state. Every school district, they take the same 30 cents per hundred dollars from that assessment and they subtract that from the base. It's the same across the board. So whether your tax rate is 44, 50, 60, 77, or 100, they're still taking only that 30 cent tax base or tax portion and subtracting that from your base. So our tax rate, what we, what you levy, what we recommend does not change the SEAC funding. Whether you levy a 4% or you keep compensating, we will still only think SEAC funding. I think that that's been some confusion across the state, that a lot of people think that we, if the district levies the 4% increase, that we are giving away state money annually.
I'm glad that you, it's almost like you were reading my mind here, Ms. Owens, because, you know, the current SEAC formula as we have it has been one that's been in effect, I think, maybe some slight modifications since TARA and the lawsuits of the late 80s that ended up saying school districts are being funded inequitably. And, you know, for those that have a larger tax base, which it sounds like what we're starting to see from what Mr. Bradley just said, we're starting to see that property assessment value going up, the state then expects that the local community should be carrying more of that funding burden versus a, I'm gonna just pull out of thin air a Owlsley County, or I'm trying to think of any of them up in the mountains, Bell, Nod, you know, even any of those eastern Kentucky districts that for whatever reason is those property values there have just been suppressed, staying the same or even going down, that the state then recognizes, well, we can't just give them the same amount of money as we give a Nelson County or an Anchorage Independent, one of the richest property evaluation parts of the state. And so they then increase the amount of state funds going to a Bell or Nod or Owlsley compared to what we get here.
That's correct. And there's an additional portion that's an equalization. And they look at what our total number of students in the district are and divide that into the assessment to get an equal, a per student assessment. And then they look, they raise the per student assessment at the state level to 834,000 this year. So when they look at our per student assessment, if we're lower than that, then we get an extra amount for equalization. If we're higher than that, we don't get any. We are a tad lower, not very much. You have some districts that are at like 30%, and we're closer to the 80, 85% range on that equalization portion. And that's just a small bump. It's called a tier one calculation that they put on top of our basic funding.
Yeah, and I think that this, I mean, we could, to try and avoid talking politics, but I mean, we could talk all day about, you know, is it another example of where the state is deciding, let's cut down on taxes at the state level, but we'll let the people down at the local level then take the heat to still be able to provide the services that are required.
And I believe that's happening across the United States, not just in Kentucky.
Yeah, because it makes for good headlines, it makes for good talking points, and then those of us that are typically at the local level, whether it's a school board or a city council or, you know, the fiscal court, are the ones then left to figure out, well, how do we end up making these services still be valuable for the community?
Okay, two things. And I think we've talked about this, SEAC funding did not change.
Right.
The SEAC formula, the SEAC formula hasn't changed.
That's correct. The SEAC formula didn't change.
But SEAC money didn't change either. That's what we were told at the, at the commissioners committee.
What we will be getting for SEAC funding will change.
But it didn't change as a whole. It did not change in state.
That's correct.
Okay, then another thing is explain, because we've talked about this, explain what the 4%. When you go to say 4%, 3%, 2%, doesn't make any difference what percent. Tell us how that, how that works. So it's not 4% of your...
Tax rate, no. So what they do is they look at... Okay, so what happens with the tax rate is it's a 4% revenue increase. And so if your assessments go up high enough, you could actually have a decreased tax rate and still get an increased tax revenue. Because what they're looking at is they're looking at the total amount that we collected in taxes last year. And they're looking at the property that was taxed last year based on the new assessments of those properties, what rate would we have to have in order to generate an additional 4% revenue? So if your tax property values, if your property values go up, then they don't, you don't increase the tax rate as high. And that's kind of what happened this time, because if you look at the last year where we were at a 76.4, without the exoneration, that 4% was 76.8. So it went up .4, which was, is obviously not 4%, just to get that additional revenue. And that of course is based on, is going to be based on when they're assessing that PDA map, what area are they assessing? Then in addition to that, then they add on the new property and you get the revenue from the new property on top of that. So if they're, if they're looking at just real estate, you're probably not going to have that big jump. But if last year they looked at some of the areas where we had some properties that had had some expansions or were doing very well financially, those can increase the property value there, which makes it where we don't have to increase the tax rate by 4%. We're just getting an additional 4% revenue.
Ms. Bradley, I'm glad you brought that one up because that is probably the biggest misnomer, yeah, misconception anybody has.
What people think.
And in 10 years on the board, I think this is the first time I've ever seen the possible numbers play out like this.
Where it's a decrease?
Yeah, and because, you know, a lot of time, the way I have to do it in my, my mind to keep it simple is, you know, if we had a hundred dollars worth of total revenue coming in, the max 4% would be another $4. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the tax rate would go up 4%. That one there in mind.
Now, it could be even higher. And there's been times in some districts, I saw one district where it jumped drastically higher because their assessment, their property values went down so low with all the poll issues.
It was about 30 cents, I think, is what that was.
Yes, and it, well, I saw one jump from like 50 to 80 in order to get that 4% increase. Now, if we had actually looked at an increase in 4% tax rate increase, we would have been closer to 80 if you were looking at a 4% tax rate increase. We're not looking at a tax rate increase.
Which at that point would be over what by law can be set without any sort of recall. Yeah.
Yeah, so this is not looking at a 4% rate increase, it's only looking at a 4% revenue increase.
You know, when people say your rate increases, like Kevin, the utility people tell you you're going to be hiking 4%, 6%, this is not on the same level as your utility hike. And I don't think we've made that plain enough for people to understand the difference between 4%, the way most people perceive 4% as opposed to this 4% in assessment.
That's correct.
So can, can we take a little bit of time though and look in, yeah, walk through this because, you know, as we look at this, you've done a good job of laying out the even percentages, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Yeah.
And, you know, we see some negative dollars in the first two options and some positive dollars in the, I'm looking at the very last far right column.
So one of the things, I don't know, one of the things that happened this year, and that's why I made sure I've notated on here, that it's per $100 of real property, which is the majority of our assessment comes from real property. But there's another small group of personal property, and that rate actually was different this year. So when they gave us the two rates, say they gave us a compensating rate, it was 73.9 for real property, but then for the personal property, actually stated 76.4. But that is such a small portion that I chose to focus on this right here because that's really what we're looking at for people, for people's taxes.
And by real property, we're talking about...
Real estate.
Yeah.
Personal property is...
Your car and your...
Um...
Boats.
Boats, trucks.
Houseboats.
Yeah, it's small, it's a very, such a small portion of the assessment that it makes very, it affects very little. So I chose to focus on the real property because that's really what we were looking at. So the idea of this is that for each of these rates, that we're generating an additional 1% of revenue. And then of course, we, we had some, there is new property. I think it was about, I want to say it was about 3 million, no, it was, it was quite a bit higher. There's quite a bit of new property as well that adds on top of this, which is why you still get a slight increase in your general fund tax revenue, but you're still having a decrease in the overall general fund revenues. What we really tried to do, these are estimates, they're not perfect. I used some calculations. Tim had some spreadsheets that he had utilized before for you guys, and I used those. But each of these, if you look at it though, until you get to 3%, because our current rate is 76.4, until you get to 3%, I mean, that's, that's our current rate. So, I mean, even with 3%, you're not costing the public anything. Yeah, it's still the same, it's almost a wash.
Yes, and so this, this is something that always in my head, again, it helps me keep it simple in my mind. So that far right column, the cost for $100,000 home, that dollar amount, whether it's a decrease or an increase, that is for the whole year for the property tax or is that per month?
That's per year.
Okay, so then if I had a $100,000 house and we were to assess the 4% revenue increase for the entire year for next, it'd be for next year, correct?
No.
Oh, it'd be the taxes, yes.
The bills will go out in October.
Yeah, it's the taxes that come out this fall, I'm sorry.
The bills will go out in October.
It would be $8 more total that I would be paying.
That's correct. You paid $1,000 last year, the bill will be $1,008 this year.
Be $1,008.
Now, this is just for our portion, and I want to, I want to make sure I'm clear on that. There are other portions on your property tax bill that have nothing to do with the school district. What they levy at all of those types of means, that's on there. But for the school portion only, if you paid $1,000, then it would go up to $1,008. And if you look at that, for instance, on the 77.2, because we're currently 76.4, the 76.4 to the 77.2 is that .08.
Yeah. The, and I'm glad that you also mentioned that because the property tax bill, a lot of times what we hear is, or you know, whether it's through social media or through Kroger or wherever, is, well, you know, that huge amount of, of school property tax, it's the most of the property tax bill, which it is. It typically, any of the individual taxes, the school tax that is on there is the largest by far. The big difference being is the revenue streams that we have versus other taxing authorities like a city council or a fiscal court government. You know, I live out in the county here in Nelson County. Every month on my Salt River Electric bill, I have a little tax, it's not sent that way, but it's a little tax for garbage pickup. And that is county garbage pickup that's occurring.
And you also have taxes on your property tax bill, like your library and your sheriff's department, and all of those things are added to that. And people often confuse that property tax bill and think that it's all school and it's not.
Right. Well, and also we forget at times too, that county government, for the fiscal court to operate, the county sheriff, the sheriff's office gets their budget through the fiscal court, the majority of it. Library, the circuit court, I'm sorry, the county clerk, that budget also comes out of the fiscal court budget. So there's all those other little revenue streams that feed into, for this example, the fiscal court budget, whereas what we have is we have SEAC, we have these taxes, and there's a couple others that are available. One of them we've never done, and I would hope that in my time, we would never do which school districts, and there are a few that do this, an occupational tax. Here in, here in Nelson County, that's one of those things we want to stay far away from.
Yes, and we do, we have this one, and even though you don't see it on this one, we actually have the tax vote, you'll have the motor vehicle tax, which we're capped at, you can't change, there's really no changing that, and your utility tax, which is also a cent amount. So that's, that's really our revenue, you're correct, SEAC and those.
Well, and, you know, we've spent a lot of time over the past several years here in this community, for example, with the city government, Barstown City Government. And one of their funding streams that they had dipped into quite a bit to balance the operational budget was utilities, whether it was the electric or whether it was the cable and internet. And so they had pulled money out of that as another revenue stream for their services that the city government provide. I think they have now tried to get away from that and keep those as separate entities. But that, again, that's something we don't have. It's not like we are able to say, you know, we sell things or we rent out our buildings all, all the time, or, you know, things like that. So again, point being that we've got very limited revenue streams. And from what I'm seeing here, the revenue increases that are available to us, we have the ability to be very much negative in the hole in the overall budget at close to $700,000. Or we will still be a little bit in the hole because of some other reductions with SEAC funding and other areas, but yet it would only cost me if I had a $100,000 house, $8 more per year.
And I'm looking at this right when I think that to get us to break even, meaning to where we didn't have any decrease in our general fund, we would have to raise it about 5.3%.
Yes, but we're not allowed to do that.
Right, we're not allowed to do that without it being a vote, without, if we did that, then it would have to be voted on and you would call and all that.
And if it recalls, you drop down to the compensating rate.
Yeah.
Right, but I, but...
You are correct.
Okay, that's, so I'm looking at, right, so yeah, so I mean, it's...
Either way, it's...
I don't know, yeah, I don't know how we have a choice. I mean, we do, to go further in the hole.
So, but the bottom line with this is that if somebody has a $100,000 home, $8 of their property taxes is just coming to the school.
In addition to what they're already paying. Not necessarily coming to the school.
It's in addition to what they're already paying, it'll be an L or G.
Yeah, if I had a, if on my property tax bill last year, the school portion was $1,000, this year it'd be $1,080.
$1,080, yes.
Do, do you happen to know off the top of your head what the median home price is?
I don't.
Okay. At one time, and Tim always had a hard time getting that number from Tishner in the PBA office, but I kept hearing it was somewhere around 100 and a quarter to 130 in that range. So half of the values were less, half of the values in the category were more. And even based on that, if, if we're using 100,000 as our easy number to look at, if the median was 125,000, that's a 25% increase, which would be $2 more, which means the median home would have a $10 increase.
I think the, just taking into consideration here though, that everybody's home value is increasing.
Sure.
Right, so that's how the property assessment is managed, saying that is, that's how more revenue is generated.
Sure, sure. Which is why there's a couple scenarios where the tax could go down even though there could be more revenue coming in.
Tim was actually hoping for that, and it got really close to where...
The tax rate.
Yeah, and of course, and I do understand the argument as well in that, well, if there can be more revenue coming in, well, why not lower the tax, lower the effective taxes that someone is paying in the community by either going with the 1% or the 2%, or even going with the compensating, which says, you know, there's going to be no increase in the revenue. But at the same time, that means then we'd be looking at a half a million dollars, $700,000 worth of less revenue when everything continues to go up in the cost of...
And last year, we spent all the revenue that we had coming in, so it's, it's not like we had...
There's no savings account.
It wasn't an extra.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think additionally, as we look at the conversation that we're having on slide 19, I guess it'll be slide age 18. We know that we, as a board, you've continued to take some efficiency measures over time. And we also recognize that not because of our recommendation for a tax revenue increase, but because we know, that's what we do as financial stewards, is that we are committed to really continue to make this process, and our budgeting process, more community-centered, more engaged with our schools and principals and community leaders. And we also know that as a, we expect our product and experiences for kids to continue to get better. And I think there's some, there's conversations that we've continued to have around what that looks like in the short term and the long term, because at the end of the day, more money doesn't mean better profit, more money doesn't mean anything. And that's why we've talked, and we continue to talk about, how are we giving more money at the school level, students in the classrooms? And I can, I can guarantee you, as a part of this conversation, as we continue, we're going to continue to have that, how are we giving more money back to schools through the site-based allocation process and allow them to continue to innovate and grow? And that's something that I know is very important to me as a superintendent, it's important to our principals, it's important to Amy as a finance officer, and I think that's something that these, this process improvement, reallocation planning, this is really just the beginning of that conversation, so.
So, yeah, I was, so I'm myself, I've jumped off this, I started looking a little bit at some of the budget and the revenue stuff in the spreadsheet that you had shared with us.
Yes, sir.
So I want to make sure that I'm also looking at this correctly. I noticed one of them there had to do with technology. Of course, that's obviously the first one I'll probably focus in on.
On the expense side.
Yeah, on the expense side. And, you know, we've, we've kicked off this initiative of the one-to-one at 3, 6, and 9, and next year again, 3, 6, and 9, and so on until all grades from 3 through 12 are covered. And probably there'll be classroom sets at the lowest grades, I would think, by then. We're making sure that we're turning that cost every year into an operational cost, correct?
That's correct. You will notice that last year, our expenses in technology were less than $500,000. The budget this year that I'm closing will be $900,000. That is not only the one-to-one technology, but there's another cost in there that our schools have been paying at the school level that we don't feel that they should be covering in part of their Section 6 money. And so I've included that in there as well, which is why it was a little bit higher than the 300 and something thousand that was originally from...
Well, and the reason why I focused in on that one, and I could have said the same thing about, you know, we, we as a board have taken an initiative for school security, you know, with BJ McCoy being our, our first resource officer here within the district. We've also taken the initiative through both partnership as well as funding nursing at all of our schools, you know, the health services, making sure we're taking care of our students and staff. Well, and, and so we, we start those initiatives and we want to make sure they're sustainable because so often it's very easy for there to be a lot of hype at the beginning of something that is good and great, and then I'm going to use the phrase, once that photo op is gone, it's forgotten about, and then there's no sustainability long term. But I'm seeing in here, we're wanting to build in that sustainability for these positive approaches that not only we believed in, that Mr. Bradley and the staff believed in, that the community believed in as well. And if we were to start taking even further steps backwards in the overall revenue that we have, how would we be able to sustain those things?
And it would be very difficult. And that is what, what we've been discussing about trying to put more money back in the schools and back to those programs. It will mean that we're trimming costs other where, other areas, that will be in things like business services. And, and the more we can do to be better stewards of the funding that we receive, both from SEAC funding and state funding, the more money that we can put back in the classroom for students. And that's the goal. So you will see those in the budget, you'll continue to see those in the budget.
Well, seeing that's one of those things, you know, we wouldn't want, if we made the wrong decision today, not literally today, today, but, you know, at this point in time on this tax revenue issue, and then possibly we make a similar short-sighted decision next year, it could be three, four, five years down the road, all of a sudden we're looking around going, we don't have the funds to continue the one-to-one, or we don't have the funds to continue with a resource officer or officers, because at one time we've talked about multiples, you know, we said, let's start with the one. And at that point then, what do we do? Then all of a sudden, we're cutting these great things that are meant directly for our students. We've got to be thinking about this long term, not just one year.
That's correct.
So I can talk about the recommendation that we intend to make on the 18th, and obviously as a board, you guys get to just evaluate and make your own judgment on that. But due to really an estimated $1 million reduction in SEAC regardless of the tax levy process, and due to increased local property assessment and a reduction in the 2018 ADA, we're going to, we will likely experience a reduction in general fund even with a 4% increase. And based on this information, as a superintendent and working with Amy as chief finance officer, we'll be recommending that you levy a 4% tax revenue increase, increase plus prior year exoneration, to create a process where we can build on what we've started. Even with the loss, we know, even with that potential loss, we feel like we can sustain what we have. And that's why we'll be making that recommendation.
And by loss, you mean the...
Potential $200,000 less than the budget.
Okay. And is that, and that's because there is a little bit of reserve that is the required...
I think it's also for the fact that we're looking at and we're doing a serious audit on all areas of expenses and we believe we'll be able to...
And finding, we've done the low hanging fruit, which was the HVAC systems, the geothermal, all the energy efficiency, those were the quick and easy ones. Now it sounds like we're starting to go after the last little things that we can find.
Did you have a question? I did.
Sorry.
That's okay. I just noticed that. So what, so when you talk about, you know, even sustaining, you know, we levy the 4%, they're still in negative, you know, to the general fund, and we can still sustain at that point? So what is that, that kind of that drawing line financially? What's that dollar amount that says we can no longer sustain at this amount? Can't tell you that right now. I'm evaluating every line so closely right now that for me to just throw out a dollar amount, I, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be fair to you for me to just throw out a number at this point. Will that number be ready before we vote?
I mean, I'll tell you, I think if you look at slide, the slide 16, right there. So if you look at a potentially $700,000 increase... So if you look at a potentially seven hundred thousand dollar increase in funding, you, by changing policies around staffing allocations at schools, anything is possible. You can reduce the number of staffing at schools, you can reduce the number of staffing anywhere. So I think anything is possible in the sense that any of these, we can still do the work. I think the reality is, building on, if you were to go into schools, or go into the work that we're doing across the district, most people are going to say that they're working pretty lean already. I don't think anyone's going to say that they have too many teachers in their classrooms. And I think that's really the place you look, or let's say hypothetically, we say we're not going to buy buses, and we're not going to allocate for Chromebooks. I mean, there's, there it is, right? There's the money. So those are the types of things that you just know you'd be having to barter.
But that's not sustaining.
Right.
No, that's not.
So what I'm saying is, you can't.
Sustaining is keeping things.
So what I'm saying is.
The status quo as it is, you know, going forward, you know, and I know that the goal is to, you know, take a look at things and to be, and to be even more lean, and to say, okay, where are we needlessly spending money, and how can we change that? I totally get that. But when we say sustain, I want to know, okay, what is that cutoff line that says, if we go any lower than this, that we can no longer sustain, and we're going to have to start making these cuts, we're not going to be able to do the buses, we're not, we're going to have to pay out. Okay, so last year, we didn't buy buses.
We know.
We know. And we still spent more than revenue than we had coming in.
Well, now, in all fairness.
And we did have a big project.
If we're going to do this now, let's do it right, let's get it all out here on the table. Cox's Creek cost us over a hundred thousand dollars.
More than that, more than that.
I said over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty-six. Then also, like you said, we did not buy buses, we spent three hundred thousand on Chromebooks.
That didn't come out last year.
And all that kind of stuff.
That's this year.
There has to be something that, and I'm not going to cheat teachers this year, we're going to talk about that later. There's things that has to be done as opposed to things that don't have to be done. And Diane's right, we need a line that says, how much is our, but how much is our expenditures per year to make things work out? To make what I call, if I was at home and my husband said, okay, here's a hundred dollars, what are you going to buy with a hundred dollars? And then I go back and say, hey, I'm going to buy food, I'm going to do this. I want to know, and I'm with her, I want to know what the baseline is that we need to, to make it work.
So I think the, the challenge with that question is, you know, in Amy and our work, we're seeing where opportunities to allocate to schools where maybe they're not getting that already. So for us to give you a line, we would argue that we've already crossed that line, because we're making cuts to things. And we're also thinking about building in grounds, repairs, and things that we need to begin investing in, that we really, maybe in some cases, don't have the flexibility to do. So from my perception as a superintendent, we're at that line, because if we're going to continue to build upon and even have a chance to reallocate more and more towards our priorities, if we go backwards, our ability to be flexible and reallocate more intelligently towards our priorities is going to be very difficult. So if you think about the amount of, let's say, maintenance or personnel cuts that six hundred and seventy-five thousand, or technology cuts, how that impacts kids or how it impacts schools, it's a lot, it would be a lot. You could, you could potentially do any of these and maybe not see any difference that first year, where it's, but it's going to catch up with us very quickly.
Yeah, that's the way it works. You may not think so, but the next year, if you don't take whatever you think, you're already down one percent, or you're down two percent.
I would also argue that we, as a school district, are at a unique time. We're in a unique time in terms of just the way our local property taxes are evolving, the way our ADA evolved over the past ten years. And I think we're at a really essential time to continue to grow and build on the momentum that we've seen in some of our schools over the past year, over the past three, four months. And I think with that, we want to continue to, as you've talked about, put people first, reevaluate salary and benefits packages, which Amy's talked about. Those conversations can't really even be approached as we continue to think about losses and cutting. I think at the same time, we also have to do, we have to be fully transparent around how we're reallocating and cutting to do those things. Because if we're going to go one direction, we're going to have to make sacrifices in another direction, just like in many ways, we've had to do in the past year or two.
Well, the example of the buses, I think, is a good one there. Let me ask you something, Ms. Breeding, because whenever you asked what the line was, because it's a great question, I'm wondering, is Ms. Dye's comment she made earlier, in one way, answered that? There's actually two answers, I think, that could come out of that. One of them being, we could either have revenue exactly the same, and you did some quick math of five point three, five point five percent, which we know, if we were to say that, it automatically sets up the opportunity for there to be a public recall, which then could have massive negative effects, because then we go back to the compensating. It just removes all of our opportunities there. And I think the other way that it could be answered was, how much more can we cut until we are just bleeding so bad that we can't function? And I think, and that's kind of a horrific way to say it, but, but, you know, as Mr. Bradley was saying, that, you know, if we were to pick the two percent, well, already we know that we're going to be starting out a little bit over five hundred thousand dollars less in total revenue.
And I apologize, I probably didn't understand your question completely, because in my mind, even with the four percent, we're not sustaining exactly what we spent last year. We can't, because we don't have the same revenue, and we already know that we spent more than we got last year. So even with the four percent, we're still making some cuts, but they're not on these major programs that you guys have just initiated. There, we're, we're starting to look at the other areas, and we're going, okay, well, what do we need and what do we not need? So I think I probably didn't, when I'm, when I'm looking at that number, I'm going, well, until I go through every line, I really can't, can't see that, but we are already making some of that fine tuning changes in order to make sure that that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars doesn't come out of a contingency that's already been decreased.
Now, let me ask something, though, if you don't mind. I want to know how much money we, I want to know when the, you're told to keep a two percent, okay? Now, how much below did we take out? How much money did we take out of contingency last year?
So the contingency reduced by over four hundred thousand dollars last year, but that, that, not the contingency, but that carryforward balance is what you're looking for, reduced by about four hundred thousand. When the state looks at a two percent contingency, the amount is so low that you can't even make ends meet for a month. So we don't get tax revenue until October, November timeframe. So if we only kept a two percent contingency, we can't make payroll in July.
But that is the minimum.
That is the minimum state required. That is correct. And the way that looks is it looks at your food service bill, your food service budget, and your Fund One budget, and it's two percent of the overall, of the budgets between those two. So for instance, if we had a thirty million dollar budget, then you're looking at, what, six hundred thousand dollars would be the required contingency?
Mm-hmm.
But payroll is more than that for one of our payrolls.
What's our three big, give me, give me the three big projects that we, we have to go with?
Three big.
What's our big, what's our big projects? What's our, what are we trying to go with? I mean, what's our, huh?
Turn to page seven.
Yeah, what's our big ones?
So we've talked quite a bit around a number of issues. Busing and transportation, we know we have to reallocate there as opposed to what happened last year.
No, top, let's go with top four. What's your very top one?
As, as a superintendent, I'm going to tell you right now, one of the big pieces, as we think about student experiences, is increasing opportunities for student leadership and increasing resources to support student leadership. And student leadership impacts every kid, and those opportunities come through what we may traditionally see as athletics, but it's also in the form of all the other opportunities out there that occur with clubs and organizations, and allocating human resources to make those things come to life.
Can you give me a figure?
For the, for the increased student, student leadership opportunities? I could.
I mean, round, round about what?
I mean, I could tell you that to increase human resource capacity for student leadership, to do that right, it's going to cost us probably about a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So that's just a starting point.
Okay.
Additionally, we've looked at allocating a bus, a bus for the, we used to call the, what was the name of the bus?
Activity bus.
Yeah, activity bus. So we looked at that, cost analysis, costs us fifty-three thousand dollars annually to have a bus that drives to each high school from the middle schools to support students that are participating.
And support.
In different, in different clubs, organizations, teams. We also looked at supporting high schools with funding for transportation for student leadership, something we've not done previously, because we felt like the basic foundation for some of these is providing access to transportation, and really not covering all of it, but providing a budget for it between the two high schools was thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Those are, that's really the starting point to our conversation, really, because that's where, that's what we see as an entry point to beginning to change the conversation about student leadership.
Second.
I can tell you the school safety repairs piece, it's really just essentially, it's a part of the LPC process, but depending how the LPC goes, we may or may not have a choice in how that's allocated. So as you know, that's a, that's a larger conversation in the local planning committee. But as we look at school safety repairs, I can assure you that we could easily spend a million dollars just on entry points, access points, key, FOB, security, no, without question. We know that school safety is not only a huge priority for us, it's a huge priority for our community, and we want to make sure that we're continuing to invest in intelligent technology to make that easier.
Okay.
I think if, as we look at expanding early college and career pathways as well, that's honestly, you're looking at a few teachers. As we think about, as we think about our investment this year that we've made in workforce development with the two workforce development leaders at each high school, those are essentially certified salaries. We're already seeing great value in the work they're doing in the first month, it's changing the conversations, and.
How much?
I'm, for the early college and career pathways, I can tell you that as we look towards next year, if we, if we open up two new pathways, we're looking at a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. But again, you can, that's some of that is reallocation, because there may be another program that was closed. So additionally, as we think about employee salary and benefits package, that's something that Amy and I have talked about, really doing a cost analysis, and then looking at, here's our current salary and benefits package that we're offering, how does that compare to where we see ourselves in our current geographic area? How does that fare to our trends over time, whether that be five, ten-year patterns that we see, as we've talked about? And that's really just a matter of cost analysis. So we've not done a cost analysis of all the employee salary and benefits packages, that's a priority for us to do. You know, you've talked about the importance of looking and thinking about the, we're currently, our, our scale stops at twenty-five years, we have quite a few teachers that continue to stay on. That's something that the surrounding districts have embraced, to continue to put people first, especially in honor their work in the district. That's something that, you know, could cost somewhere between fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars, we expect. We can't say for sure until we do that full cost analysis, which I think will happen in January and February, as we start looking at that more in depth.
And planning for the next fiscal year.
Salary schedule, yes.
And then in the busing and transportation, a bus cost anywhere, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, remember, these are all things we'd like to do.
Therefore, I'm asking.
So the only way we can do these things would be reallocating, because no matter what, we're going to go backwards in terms of general fund. So my point is, these are the, some priorities that we would like to begin allocating towards. To make these happen, we're going to have to reallocate away from where we currently are.
So what I hear is that goes to somewhat answering Ms. Breeding's question, in that if we also, as a board and as a community, say, these are important things, then where is that cut line, or where is that place where it starts to hurt? It, it's already happening, because we're going to have to take it from some other place. You know, I'll go.
Or we're all paid or paid off.
Yeah, exactly, exactly right. And I'll go back to what I said earlier, just to re-clarify it. You know, we've, we've spent as a board the past, mm, about nine years, give or take, because it started under Superintendent Lance with the energy efficiency work. And I think, if I remember right now, we're down just one building, is that correct, Mr. Bradley, that is not energy efficient, and that's simply because it cannot be classified energy efficient. Doesn't matter what we do to it, I think, if I remember correctly.
Early learning center.
Uh, yes.
Right.
And so, you know, people also hear that, oh, well, you've saved money there, so that means then you've got that money sitting somewhere to spend elsewhere. The difference being is that fifteen years ago, electrical units might have cost X. Fifteen years forward to now, electrical units of electricity cost three times X. We're having to pay more for those commodities, we're just using fewer of them. So it's not that we've ended up being able to save all that money into some little pot over here. Point of that being is, those were very easy things that were able to be done. I mean, easy to change out lighting to LED light, easy to put systems on, computer-operated systems. What you're getting to now, that I heard you say, Ms. Owens, is looking for the pennies.
That's correct.
You're going through a budget, trying to find the pennies of, okay, it looks like maybe we're using a little too much paper here. Why is that? Is there a way we can reduce the paper usage a little bit, squeeze a little bit more savings in?
And those small amounts add up, and you're correct, we are looking line by line down.
Which, which means that possibly, we already are looking, I would think, at the point of, if we start doing anything less than the four percent, then we have major impacts. It's going to be major impacts of buses that are, I mean, I heard a district on the north side of Fayette County that literally, they have not bought buses in I don't know how long, and they're now going to be looking at multiple buses, and they won't be able to afford them.
So as far as the buses go, in order to maintain the fleet for the size district that Nelson County is, we need to be purchasing five to six buses a year. Okay, right here, last year, we did not purchase any. We did the previous year, but if I look back at a ten-year history, we have not purchased buses. I did calculate what we, how many buses we'd have to buy this year to get us almost back to an even playing field, and it'd be ten, ten in one year.
That's a million dollars.
Easily. Because the minimum cost of a bus is about eighty-five thousand, if you're getting the smallest sized bus that you can, but they go up to about ninety-five thousand dollars. So you're correct, we're already behind on buses, and that is something that we're going to have to address. I have to make sure we get in five at least in order to continue to build, but we also somehow need to catch up the other five.
Otherwise, if we skip another year, then it's going to be fifteen.
Then it's fifteen.
Yeah.
And remember, buses used to be sixty-two thousand.
Yeah.
So if we wait a couple of years, they're going to be over a hundred thousand now, so.
Well, and this, and this also ties into student safety. It also ties into making sure that we have the opportunities for student leadership, because, you know, we've all also said, we'd love to see that activity bus come back. That means you've got to have a bus available, you've got to have a driver available. And if we're neglecting our bus fleet, will we have a bus available to do that? We may not. So we've got to make sure that we're, we're doing that cycle of refresh on the buses as well.
I have a question, and to see if I'm following something correctly, and that is, is it the best or the fastest way for us to grow our revenue is to get more students, is headcount?
It, well, that is, that is a very good way, but it will take a year to catch up to us.
Right, it will take a year to catch up to us, but my, my thought process is, is that, you know, by spending close to break even now, to do the initiative that we've, that we've decided on pretty much, execute on the long-term vision. We're going to execute on the long-term, long-term vision. We have to do four percent this year, we may have to do the backups, we do four percent again next year or the year after, but in the long-term, in the ten-year plan, if we do, if it is successful, which I believe it will be, then in ten years, when we raise, when we don't lose students, when we're gaining students, then that's when it will be the two percent breaks us even, because we have more students.
It may even be before that. What you're talking about is the cycle, it's some of the, every year.
I was going to make sure I'm right on that.
No, you are right, because if you've got schools that are producing a good product, I mean, it's inviting for students, it's got opportunities for them, the students that are graduating are ready to walk right into the workforce or have success at college, what, what does that usually mean? That usually means parents look at that and go, hey, maybe I want to move there. What happened just to the east of Jefferson County, Oldham County, and Shelby County?
Yeah.
Okay, so then people start moving into that community, which does increase the student enrollment. But what also does it do?
School district of choice.
Well, now, what I, what I was going with that is, what it also does is, there then has to be housing.
And then there's the tax base.
And so then the tax base. Well, then, whenever you've got those two pieces in play, the next piece then is, industry looks at that in business, and they go, wait a minute, there's a lot of people living there's a lot of people living there, so we got workforce capability. I mean, whether they can do it or not, there's people. And then the other thing they look at is the school, and they go, wait a minute, your school is producing good product. So the kids that are coming out can go to work for us, and there's a lot of people there in the community, so it's, it's a buyer's market at that point. They can look at and go, hey, we got all kinds of applicants we can choose from.
And you've just made Class 101 of human geography.
Well, now, I could have another just random questions, I'm gonna take you to the next, which is, as far as the community involvement, all that type of thing, does somebody from the school district work with, say, the state road department? Just as far as you think about what Bullock County's been able to do, what they've been able to do with Amazon, the Hut group, all of those things, because of their location to I-65? We don't have an I-65. So, you know, are, is that something that where we, does somebody look at that big global picture, or is that just too much?
Tell me more about what you-
No, I'm thinking about, you know, I'm taking it to the, making the general assumption that everything that we're gonna do is eventually going to work and gonna pay off. And we're gonna have the, we're gonna have the kids, we're gonna have the people wanna live here, we're gonna have the businesses that wanna come here. How are we gonna get the people in and out of Nelson County? So is there a global scheme somewhere else, where, I don't know if it's a Senator, who, who it is, is out there saying, hey, listen, this is what the Nelson County School District is doing, this is what the commu, this is what's going on here, that are helping be ready? Because that's why people drive to Oldham County and Shelbyville versus driving to Shepherdsville, because it's the difference, it was the difference in I-71, I-64, you know what I'm saying, versus one route out of I-65.
I would think that Kim Houston would probably be a key player in that, you know, with the Nelson County Economic Development Group there. Not that she's the one that's gonna say, okay, these are the roads that need to be improved, but those are good points too, because as we start to see that improvement, that growth within enrollment, then also that growth within property, there's going to have to be that infrastructure piece that follows along.
Right, that's what I was just-
I mean, Shepherdsville is ideal, I mean, it's twenty minutes from the UPS Global Hub. And that's why they're all locating there, I mean, it's just, makes perfect sense, yeah.
We're still very fortunate.
We are.
Geographically, we're very, part of the tax levy process is simple geographic determination, where do you live? And we've been very fortunate in Nelson County to have increased business investment, and to also have increased property values. And that's, that has served our community well, and I think it's served our school district well. And I think us looking at this as a team, recognizing that nothing's guaranteed for the future, but here's our current reality. I feel like Amy did, Amy's done a really nice job of providing, here's, here's our current reality. And I respect, and I do respect the decision you guys make as a team, so.
How many kids we think are gonna use that activity bus for fifty-three thousand dollars a year?
That's, that's why, that's really why, before we make that allocation.
We have to make, we have to make that possible, really.
We don't have to make it possible if it's ten kids.
No, but we need, it doesn't prob, it's just not for athletics. You know, my niece went home-
Oh, I'm not thinking athletics, I'm thinking anything, beta, whatever.
Yeah, beta, anything. Kids can't, a lot of kids can't even stay after school, because they don't have a way home. You can't just put them out there on the, you know, mom's working, daddy's working, it just, when we quit doing the, I was very disappointed when we quit that, really. Because our kids at Boston couldn't even-
I think it's absolutely wonderful, but for the fact that it's ten kids versus-
Yeah, but there won't be ten kids, believe me.
It, it, it takes a time.
I didn't know if we had an estimate.
Well, it's a chick, it's gonna be one of those chicken and egg things.
Which comes first, the bus or the kids?
Yeah, because, or, or we can use the other analogy, build it and they will come.
That means a lot.
Oh, absolutely, I could make it on it.
Whenever the-
I'd have to force it.
Yeah.
Whenever the activity buses were still running about ten years ago, you had students that were coming from, I know from the Bloomfield area, I'm not sure how they were working from New Haven and Boston, but Bloomfield area, they were coming up from Nelson County High School. They were doing cross-country, they were doing soccer, they were doing golf. I, there were not, there were not any football, yeah, I'm just going through the athletics pieces. So, you know, it was those seventh and eighth graders, they were writing it up to participate in JV, and some of them even varsity sports. Add on to that what Ms. Berry was just saying, you know, participating in non-academic, I'm sorry, non, non-athletic enterprises, it could be banned, it could be many other things, that they're wanting to participate at the high school. And it, and it does make it a challenge for a family to be able to, you know, pick up their kid at three-thirty, get them up there. My mom became the activity bus for three kids last year.
That's my mom, yeah.
You know, my, my kids didn't even get to participate, everything they wanted to participate, until they could stay after school for it. Because we had five children, and there's just no way.
Yeah, and that's a great point.
It's a lot to pay for.
And now, it may not mean that that activity bus takes the kids back to their home school, but at least it can get them, and it may mean that.
This fifty-three thousand dollar estimate was getting them back to their home.
Oh, it was, okay.
Yeah, it, it means a lot, even if you just drop your kid off at Boston School, and the mama comes out from your direction.
Can't dump my kid, but we're not fine with that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but that's what we did, I mean, that would let us off.
Yeah, that's where we got them to dump it.
Well, you went home, a mama picked us up, or somebody picked us up, or-
And once that bus is running, then as the parents hear about it, oh, I've gotta wait now for Joe-
Lulu to come home.
Or whomever to be able to get up to the high school that I couldn't offer them before. And they, and maybe they didn't have the luxury like you or myself, that had a grandma, they would go and pick them up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, I will say, just one last thing, is the attendance, you know, you talked a little about attendance. And this year, nearly every school's up above where they were projected to be in attendance. And so if you look at the progression over the last ten years, this is one of the few years where we are increasing in attendance, so. It's, and at the end of the day, attendance isn't something that you can directly correlate to this variable or that variable. But, 'cause it does, it does include demographics of where you live. With that said, we know that what we intend to offer in Nelson County Schools is gonna be, and is, continuing to be, something that we're proud of, and will be, I think, continuing to send a message to our community very loud and clear, that Nelson County pride is, is real, and that we live it out in our schools. So, that's our current, that's another part of this conversation. There is, I think, that resurgence that we're seeing at some of our schools.
How much is our enrollment across the board, do you know, ballpark?
It's up, it's up a hundred over projection. It's up, it's up, the projection's different than actual, so this time last year, the numbers are up, just a few kids, ten to fifteen kids over last year this time.
At each school?
No, total. But a hundred projection, over projection. Part of it, ELC too, we don't have a full projection in the ELC, because they keep enrolling as they turn three years old. We'll have a better awareness of that. I also think about some of the work that we're doing with our attendance team, and I see some of that continuing to already make a difference in some of the teaming they're doing. So I think that's also gonna make an increase for some of the work we're doing.
Would, would it be something that we could see any value in? Was it September tenth, September fifteenth, whatever that date is?
Eighteenth, that's actually eighteen.
Okay, no, no, I'm not talking about our next board meeting. It's the date that there is a-
Beanie Hill Engagement.
An attendance number that is supplied to KDE.
The end of the second school-
The hundredth day of school.
It's based on whatever day your, your school day starts, and so I don't have the exact-
Gotcha, okay. So would it be any help to us if we looked at those numbers from this year, just to have the information this year versus last year?
It's good to see that for ten years.
And then maybe even looking at, maybe the halfway point of the school year? That way then we can kinda see what the attendance trends look like? I don't know how hard that is to put together.
I'm sure Jessica will be able to print out a report that can show us that.
Well, I can, I can just say that I, as an example, my child didn't feel good yesterday or whatever, and I said, well, do you need to stay home? And she said, no. And I said, why? She said, well, look at what I got. And so she had, for the first time, I mean, in four years, a piece of paper that talked about the importance of attendance. And it talked about it, and it, that was the first time that I had had a piece of paper brought home, that the kid brought home and read, and she said, I only get four parent notes. And I was like, that's right. So you better be really sick if you think you're gonna stay home. And I mean, she knew the rules, she could spit it off right out.
Where did she bring that home?
It was this, what's today, Thursday?
Mia brought the same thing a while back, I don't remember what day it was, but she wouldn't wanna miss either, she wasn't feeling well, had a headache, and wouldn't miss.
No, I'm not missing school. And I mean, usually, that was, so whoever's working on that, about the attendance, kudos, because that one little piece of paper worked.
And schools are communicating that in a number of ways. And some of them are printing it out for every kid, some of them are communicating it in a variety of ways. It's good to hear that.
Yeah, it was great.
I wish I saw something like that.
Yeah. So, so one, one more question, I'll just kinda direct to Ms. Owens or Mr. Bradley. So if there's any other questions that we have as we continue to digest this, should we filter through Mr. Bradley, and then he can get with you, and you all sit down to figure out, is that the way you would like it done?
Yeah, I think too, you can even directly comment in here, we'll, we'll get a notification of that. There, any, either way you go, we'll be of support.
Okay, and, and then we've got the tax hearing on the eighteenth at-
Four-thirty.
Okay, four-thirty. And so we've got between now and then, if there's any other questions that we have that might come up. So we'll go on then to Item B, which is the working budget, Ms. Owens?
We have discussed this a little bit in the last, in the last forty minutes or so. But what I've provided you is, on the first two tabs, is a summary of where the revenues are coming from in, for fiscal year nineteen, and what expenses that we expect. And I wanted you to notice on the revenue side, I've given you a history. And you can see that we average about six-hundred to seven-hundred thousand dollar increase every year in revenue, is what we've been seeing. And this year, we are expecting a decrease. Now, you'll notice that the decrease showing on here, a little bit more than the two-hundred thousand that we've estimated. And that's because we get some miscellaneous revenue each year, that you can't really budget for, but we do know we get an approximate amount every year. And so that, even though in, in our heads, we kinda know that's gonna come in somewhere, there's nowhere to budget for, because it's, it's stuff that you just can't plan for. It's not an every-year thing. It might be, we sold a bus that was surplus, or, or something along those lines. So I do believe that that revenue will be closer to the thirty-one point two, or thirty-one point, point three, which would put us a couple hundred thousand dollars down. But that will be the new, the new revenue, it does not include any carryforward money in there. And then in the expenses, we've broken down, and the goal would be to break down the new revenue. You don't wanna, I don't wanna show you what we're gonna spend from old revenue, because the goal is to only spend what we have coming in this year. And so what you're seeing is here, is an expense breakdown, only utilizing that new revenue.
I think too, this builds on the, the draft tentative budgets that the board discussed in January and May. You can see the tentative comparison on all those tabs, which I know most of you-
And you'll see a few differences on the tentative and working. Some of that is just the way, way it was put into UNIS versus the groupings that, that I recognize. And so it doesn't necessarily mean that the money has moved to another area, it just simply means where, if I run a report for a tentative budget, this is where it's showing me, but it doesn't mean that that's where it's been spent. And you can see that, because you can see the history of what we've actually spent in those fields. So on these four, if you add them together, you're gonna get pretty close on that working budget to what we've spent in the past, if there's not really an increase in that section. And the, you'll also note, there's very few areas where we have budgeted more than, than what was already listed in that tentative budget. These things already took into consideration the health services initiative, the three, the one-to-one initiative, the school safety. There's very few areas that you'll, you'll see a difference. But being that we don't have extra revenue coming in, there were some things that had to be considered, and we had to take from one area and put it in another.
One, one quick question on that, so Row Nineteen there, the Section Six money? So as I look all the way across, I see a little over four-hundred thousand dollars tentative. Have we increased the per-
We haven't, I believe the way, you're required, the law says that we give three and a half percent of that base SIC amount. But, so this, this year it's four thousand dollars, and three and a half percent is a hundred and forty dollars. A couple of years ago, because of the situation among school districts, they did reduce that, and say you only have to give one hundred. I believe that in the tentative budget, it only had that one hundred. However, we also have to recognize that our schools really can't do what they need to do if we only give them that hundred dollars. So the five-hundred and seventy is based on the hundred and forty dollars that the original-
So you, yeah, that's what I was wondering, because I can remember back several years ago, when Mr. Hall was still on, we had been stuck at that hundred for a while, and there was one year where we did, it was either one-ten or one-twenty spike, and then it came back down. So this is another opportunity of us putting more funds into that school building, as you were talking about.
So there's two, two significant things that are happening, I think, to local school Section Six budgets. One, we're taking a copy machine rental cost at the district level, which is, in some cases, a significant portion of their Section Six. Two, the forty percent increase here. So at a given school, they're probably looking at a fifty percent increase in Section Six, based on its working budget. Which is gonna allow them some more flexibility to put people first, innovate and grow, and do some of the things that we wanna continue to do, is we empower them as principals and teachers with that.
Now, I'll say that their needs were still being met, a lot of those needs were being met at this level. They, if they needed something addition, they would be able to come and request to it. Now we can let them make a plan. It's very difficult to plan at your school, when, when they have to come here for every little thing they need, and taking care of their school. So this puts it there, I mean, it's, it puts the, the control back in their hands. It gives them a voice to actually make long-term plans for their school that they, that they might not be able to do if we were only able to give a hundred dollars.
We've got this great plan, can we get some money from you? No, sorry, it's up, oh, okay. That's what was happening.
Exactly, and so, and as, as he was mentioning on that, that copy machine, that lease cost among the schools, that's about eighty-five thousand dollars. And of course, there's no say in that payment, that payment has to be made.
Yes.
So, so we're gonna make it.
More, yeah.
We're gonna make it.
And we are looking to reduce that cost as the lease comes up.
That's correct. And that would be with the overall goal of reducing the paper usage across the district, and, and as we go to a one-to-one initiative. I know that my children are on that one-to-one, they each, they're sixth and ninth grade. And my daughter and my son are bringing their Chromebooks home and submitting their assignments through Google Classroom, they're not even bringing home paper anymore. So I can, I already feel that we're gonna see a reduction even this year, with those types of things happening.
What did the slide say? It goes eighty percent reduction by twenty twenty?
I think it was seventy percent.
Seventy percent by twenty twenty?
Yeah, and that's gonna also come with reduction in printed costs, copy machine costs. So overall cost reduction, seventy percent. And I think that's very manageable.
And of course, we wanna encourage schools to do more without paper.
And that, now they have the tools to do that.
They have a say in how much, how much copy paper they use, and how much printing they, they use, they didn't have a say in the lease payment. So, you don't hit this, so.
So in years past, and Carl, I think Carl and I kinda talked about this one time, you know, we'd have a stack of paper, as we sat down here at even working session.
Probably a binder for each of you one at one time.
Well, it could've been at one time, yes, many years ago, but, you know, there'd be that stack of paper here. And I think I told Carl one time, it's, you don't need to do it for me, because I just take it home afterwards, and I get rid of it, because I can find it somewhere else. Now that we have the means to be able to electronically collaborate together, to be able to see all these resources out there, now we've just got this one piece of paper, just to let us know what the agenda is for tonight. We don't have the stack that has this spreadsheet, or the stack that has the-
All of those policies.
All those policies, oh my gosh.
Aren't you called those?
Oh my gosh, that was Carla. Yeah, I wore out a shredder machine at home because of all of that. So yeah, that, I mean, and that's some of the work that we're talking about, we're wanting students to do, we're doing as well. And you know, Carla's leading the effort for us here as a board team.
And I'm, and I'm happy to answer additional questions if you have any, but I tried to summarize it for you to make it a little easy to look at, and easy to go through. You will, you will have the full UNIS budget report at September eighteenth meeting, but I will also put the summary on top of it, in case there's any changes.
Appreciate that, Ms. Owens.
Good job.
Thank you. I think too, you know, we've, we've been very fortunate to have strong financial management in Nelson County Schools for a long time. I think Amy's transition, partnering with Tim, and that conversation with Wanda during that transitional month, that she retired, and her continued conversation with Tim, and her work, she's gone above and beyond, working to make all this come to life. Because one finance officer's brain is not the other finance officer's brain. So I'm not gonna venture to say ten, twelve, or fourteen-hour days, but I know there's been a lot of time and energy that Amy's put into this. And she's done it with a real sense of savvy and class, it's been very impressive, so fortunate for us.
You've made it simple.
Yes.
That's all anybody can ask for, from a money person, is just to make it simple.
Numbers aren't easy.
Yeah, 'cause it's, it's really not, I've been there.
If, I'm just curious, what is your background?
I worked, I've been with Calhoun County School District for eight years. I worked in, as the finance officer for the last five, I was human resources prior to that. I served three years in the active army, five years in the reserves, and was a stay-at-home mom for a couple of years between there, so.
Wow.
And I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and sociology, and a master's in business administration. And I've gone through the School Finance Officer Management Institute that KDE offers as well.
How did you steal her, Mr. Bradley? Luck, luck?
Oh, luck follows those that work hard.
Yeah.
And I was there, I was in the room when you got the job.
We're, we're glad that you are with us, we appreciate it, this is awesome work. Thank you. We'll go on then to Item Number Four, Innovate and Grow, and four A is the Head Start Full Utilization MOA. Um, we'll go on then to Item Number Four, Innovate and Grow, and 4A is the Head Start Full Utilization MOA. Mr. Bradley?
Thanks, thanks.
So, disagreements between the, the Central Kentucky Head Start Program, uh, and the district that is really an annual memorandum that allows us to coordinate services for eligible children throughout the federal Head Start and state preschool program. And, um, really, it's laid out as, uh, part of the federal, um, the federal allocation process. This is the agreement for that. It, it is identical to the previous year agreements, so I'm looking to see.
So, this here is more formality than in?
Every year.
Yeah, every year.
I have a question. And I could probably Google this, if y'all don't dislike listening to me. What's the difference between Head Start and the Area Learning Center?
So, they're both, they're both preschool services.
Right.
Yeah, it's just the funding mechanism and the, uh, laws for that funding to go.
But it's not like there's a separate Head Start in the basement somewhere?
Actually, there has been a separate Head Start in years, yes, uh, over the old Kentucky homeschool.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and, and no.
I think Head Start too is a federal, uh, kind of safety net for communities that don't have preschool.
Yeah.
And that's really the, one of those reasons that, in some cases, so if you look, we're spending money on preschools in the district. Some places may not have that flexibility or choose to do that. Head Start is that opportunity for low-income families to have educational services.
But we provide our Head Start benefits at the Area Learning Center.
We, we, we provide similar services that Head Start provides at our Area Learning Center. That, did that make sense?
Yeah, we get federal money to.
Right, the, saying, this Head Start agreement is just saying, we're not gonna fill our school up full of kids and turn away Head Start kids. We're gonna take the Head Start kids first. We only have room for 100 kids, and we have 90 Head Start kids, they get 90 of the spots, and then the other ones go to National Museum or whatever, whatever, okay. I just want, okay, I just wanna make sure that there wasn't a Head Start somewhere that I was unaware of, 'cause that could have.
There used to be, yeah.
Yeah, we used to have a Head Start.
Okay, that, that was my question, thank you.
There are also limits with Head Start as to, um, how many students you can have per class in order to qualify for the funding that they provide. Um, it actually reduces the class size that you're legally allowed to have. The state says one thing, Head Start actually has a lower number, and so, it, it puts some more limits on you as far as that goes. Um, when you do partner with them, there can be an additional revenue source, but because of the additional costs that are created by the, all the different things that you have to provide, as a certain way, it can also cost them.
Well, they want smaller, government wants smaller class size, so, so like you get the help that they really need.
As opposed.
Yes.
But because you can only get funding for the students from one source, if they qualify for Head Start and you're getting funding sources through that, then you don't get the state funding for them as well, and.
Yeah. It's, it's based on many Head Start, yeah.
There's actually, uh, you were talking about, uh, you could probably Google it. I, I did, real quick, there's a great page, just, we wanna have more info on it.
That's what I'm.
Um, and if you Google Nelson County Head Start, don't choose Nelson County, Virginia. That confuses people a lot of times, there's Nelson County, Virginia, but there's the Central Kentucky Community Action Council, which is comprised of several counties, one of them being Nelson County, and it gives a lot of great background.
So, if my kid goes to Head Start, they go to a separate place in the Area Learning Center?
No, I think so.
No, 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 no.
So, it is all the same?